You'll get one. Okay. Are we on? Good morning, everyone. It is nine oh two. We will call this meeting to order. Uh, are there any additions to the agenda?
There are no additions.
And County Council, will you read the closed session items into the record, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. There are two items for your closed session. The first is under Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. Your count conference with labor negotiators, your agency designated representatives. Our Joel Bougaye, your Assistant County Administrative Officer. Shanika Dixon, your Director of Human Resources. And Sabrina Mendez, your Human Resources Manager. All units of employee organizations, including unrepresented employees, all classifications, but not elected officials, is under the discussion. And there is one existing litigation matter under Government Code section that is not listed there. The name of the case is J.A. Minor buying through her guardian ad litem versus the County of Madera. It's a U.S. District Court, Eastern District Court case. And that's it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on these items?
None online.
I'll close public comment and we will recess into closed session. Thank you.
...
They put the lights out, um, they say "stop".
Postuvimos y ya en eso chequeamos, ya pero había como seis kilos de ciento quemándose ya.
Uh, they both, they both were, were on stop, both was on fire.
Tratamos de apagar el fuego, pero era muy chico, desquemidor, no, no pudimos hacer nada.
It was about forty kids on, on the stairs.
Y un momento más que hubiera durado, no sé si hubiera pasado. Tuvo algo de vio, porque yo, yo no estaba en el lugar aquí. Cuando me movieron de allá para ayudar a estar exactamente a esa hora aquí.
And just like that, for a few minutes, just a little, uh, just a little bit.
Parte, yo me siento contento y muy agradecido porque, por el condado de Madera. Porque reconocieron algo que aunque no lo hicimos con el afán de ni de ser famosos, ni de, ni de tener nada. Solamente hicimos lo correcto, pero sí es un orgullo para mí ser mi compañero que, que nos reconozcan. Porque es un, es el condado que uno ama. Tengo yo, tengo toda mi vida aquí, el condado de Madera, trabajo, tengo mi familia. De ahí me siento feliz.
The bus came to the stop.
Yo me puso ahí para yo mirar, porque mi compañero estaba arriba en el tercón, pero yo estaba abajo trabajando. Solo me agaché y seguí trabajando, ya cuando volteé otra vez. Ya mire que, que, que en efecto estaba, tenía mucho fuego el bar.
We came running over here, shut the door.
En eso el señor me abrió la puerta.
That's what he told me, like, it's better to see the lights out, um, they say "stop".
Postuvimos y ya en eso chequeamos, ya pero había como seis kilos de ciento quemándose ya.
Uh, they both, they both were, were on stop, both was on fire.
Tratamos de apagar el fuego, pero era muy chico, desquemidor, no, no pudimos hacer nada.
It was about forty kids on, on the stairs.
Y un momento más que hubiera durado, no sé si hubiera pasado. Tuvo algo de vio, porque yo, yo no estaba en el lugar aquí. Cuando me movieron de allá para ayudar a estar.
Are we ready? Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera County Board of Supervisors. It is Tuesday, October 21st. County Council, do we have any reportable actions out of closed session?
Madam Chair, there are no reportable actions from your closed session. The existing litigation case is under Government Code 54956.9 subsection D1, just a note for purposes of the agenda. And then also, all items weren't complete, and so I'd ask that you'd recess to closed session when desired as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will open and close in memory of, do any of my colleagues wish to mention someone? Supervisor McCauley.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity, open and close in memory of Ann Topham, who passed away earlier this month. Ann was a charter member for the Seroptimists of the Sierras, which was established in 1968. So, a legacy of service to the community up there in eastern Madera County. A wonderful woman. We'll always remember her smiling face at all of our community events, and certainly she will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we will have our invocation by Pastor David Hawes of Fourth Street Church of God, and I will ask Rusty if you'll lead us in the flag salute after.
Good morning, everybody. It is good to be with you. Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, holy be your name. Jesus, for all of us who trust in you and your work on the cross this morning, we just say thank you that you have invited us to call your Father our Father. And Father, we just ask that your will would be done here on earth as it is in heaven. And so, God, we thank you for Madera. We thank you for this city, for this county. And we just ask, in many ways, as decisions are made in this room by all our leaders, that this city, this county would continue to grow to be a reflection of what heaven is like. And Father, we thank you that you give us today our daily needs. And so, we just pray for the people of our city and our county, that they would just experience physically, spiritually, in every way, your provision. That together, we would be a people who care for everyone around us in our neighborhoods. And we just ask that you would forgive us our sins as we forgive those who sinned against us. So, teach us to be a people of mercy and grace and patience, as you have shown us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Teach us to be a people who walk in your good way, who walk in justice and righteousness and peace, so that our city and our county flourishes. In your name, to your glory, we love you. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Rusty. Next item on the agenda is public comment. The first 15 minutes of each regular session are set aside for members of the public to address the board on any matter under the jurisdiction of the board, but not appearing on the agenda. The board will not take action on any items presented under public comment. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Anyone addressing the board will be exempt. Anyone addressing the board is asked to print their name on the speaker sheet at the podium and state their name and county of residence for the record. Do we have any public comment? I'm going to take a moment to recognize, we have a guest here today from Chachanci, or the Picaun Rancheria of Chachanci Indians. He's our local government affairs rep, Alex Tavlan, and I'd like to present a proclamation to the tribe and their members recognizing Chachanci Day, a day that celebrates the rich history, culture, and contributions of the Picaun Rancheria of the Chachanci Indians. The Chachanci people have deep roots in what is now Madera County and have long been an important part of our region's story. October 22nd tomorrow marks the date the tribe ratified its constitution in 1988, a defining moment reaffirming its sovereignty and commitment to self-government. This day honors the preservation of the Chachanci language, traditions, and cultural heritage for future generations. So, with that, Madera County is proud to stand in partnership and in friendship with the Picaun Rancheria of the Chachanci Indians. And on behalf of the board, it's my privilege to present this proclamation recognizing October 22nd as Chachanci Day in Madera County.
Thank you so much, Chair Gonzalez and members of the board, Alex Tavlan, Picaun Rancheria of Chachanci Indians. I want to thank you all so much for recognizing what is historically a very important day for our members, a moment of self-determination for the Chachanci people. And I want to say it's a true honor to partner with Madera County consistently over many years and many years in the future. So, thank you so much, and we look forward to celebrating Chachanci Day tomorrow, obviously, but also Saturday up near the reservation. So, you all have all received invites, and we look forward to celebrating. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Supervisor McCauley.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Alex, for bringing this item to our attention. Really appreciate the efforts. Obviously, the Picaun are vital partners for us in Madera County. We have a fire station up there in Indian Lakes, which is a direct benefit of, you know, the collaboration and the work that we're all doing together. So, thank you again for bringing this before us. Really, really appreciate it, and thank you, Chair.
And if I may, can we get a photo? And I'd like to invite our sheriff's department and our fire department to join us.
None online.
I'll close public comment at this time and move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. Do any of my colleagues wish to pull or discuss an item?
I wanted to mention one item. I don't want to necessarily pull it, but have a moment to discuss it.
We do have one item that's being requested to be pulled by the Behavioral Health Department, which is...
That's correct, Madam Chair. 7D, it's a proposed agreement with California Mental Health Services Authority. And the request is to pull that from your consent calendar, and the department will bring it back at another date.
Was that the...
Yes. Item 7G, I wanted to just recognize the 250th anniversary of the United States Marine Corps and their contribution to our freedom. When I look at that flag, I think of the Marine Corps. I think of every branch of the service of the men and women who have given their lives and fought bravely on foreign fields of battle to make sure that America and the world is free. And I often think of Iwo Jima, where the United States Marine Corps erected a flag and when they, I believe it was Mount Suribachi, where they erected that flag. And the icon image that has been carried since that time, an image of strength, an image of glory, an image of freedom for the whole world to look at and see. And that image has been codified in a monument in Washington in Arlington Cemetery. I stood in front of that image for about a half an hour in just awe of the beauty of what it really represents. So many young men died on that island, giving their life for our freedom and for the freedom of the world. Without their sacrifice, we don't know what we would have, what would have happened to this country or to the world for that matter at that time. And so, today, we honor their sacrifice. We honor their commitment to our freedom. We honor our flag in that process because they died for that flag and for their country. And I'd just like to end this, my comments with this statement that I made a few years back, and if I can remember all of it. But, "We have left our dead on flounders' fields, on the rock of Kragador, the bleak slopes of Korea, the steaming jungles of Vietnam, and the sands of the Middle East. Everywhere the flag of freedom has been raised, been raised by the blood sacrifice of the United States military soldier. Honor them, and the flag of freedom is flown as a beacon of hope, a citadel of freedom for the whole world to see." Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on the consent calendar?
None online.
I'll bring it back to the board for action.
I move to approve, with the exception of 7D. David, second.
D or B? Okay, all right. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Wamha.
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor McCauley.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes 5-0.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move on to discussion items. I'm going to move things a little out of order in the interest of time. We have some special guests here for item 8C, so I'd like to call that item first.
Board of Supervisors, Department District Number 4, Presentation of a Proclamation Recognizing the Heroic School Bus Fire Rescue on September 4th, 2025.
And for that, we'll ask Alex San to kick us off for the presentation.
Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors, before we air this astonishing video and story, a couple of quick thoughts here. This story came out September 4th, where a school bus was doing its routine drop-off of close to two dozen students in Lavina. And it was Avenue 8, Row 23 1/2, and something unique happened that day. Two farm workers who continue to be our lifeblood of the breadbasket to the world here in Madera County were just doing their job. Carlos Perea Romero and Angel Zarco. One was on the opposite side, and it just so happened uniquely that their tractor broke down that day. And so, Carlos had to come back to fix the tractor with Angel. He was underneath the tractor when he saw something that was incredibly scary. And so, what you're about to see here is their story through their eyes with astonishing images that describe their bravery and the epitome of what public service is all about.
Thank you, Alex San. I'd like to invite up the two farm workers, Carlos Perea Romero and Angel Zarco, to the podium, so that we can present this proclamation and these two certificates that we have for you. Your quick thinking and efforts by the Madera Unified School District bus driver, who is Alejandro Murillo, and our first responders prevented a far greater tragedy. So, this proclamation recognizes your courage and your bravery and the unity that defines Madera County. Do you have anything you want to say?
I just want to say thank you for recognizing what we did, but I'm just happy to have kept the kids safe and helped out the community. That's the main part, I really would just want to thank you, you guys. But I really don't have anything else to say. I'm much of a speaker, sorry.
Does any of my colleagues have anything they want to add? Do we have any public comment on this item? Oh, come on up. Oh, David, I think, I'm sorry, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you know, what he said really rings true. You know, God puts people in places for specific reasons, and sometimes we don't know why we're there. So, sometimes we don't know why we're in the position that we're in. I've had this happen to me a number of times myself, where I was at the scene of an accident, and I held dying people in my arms and prayed over them. But you listen to the voice of God, and he used you, and thank you for listening. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Arturo Martinez. I'm here today on behalf of the Office of State Senator Ana Caballero. We did get media advisors who are very thankful for the county for sharing this incredulous moment of celebrating these two individuals who acted to the highest standards of our community. So, I do have two certificates. One is for Angel Zarco and the other one's for Carlos Perea Romero, and they read in, "In recognition of your heroic actions in helping evacuate students from a school bus that caught fire, demonstrating extraordinary courage, quick thinking, and selfishness in the moment of urgent danger, your bravery helped protect young lives and reflects the highest values of compassion, community responsibility, and human courage. Hereby signed by Senator Ana Caballero, presented today, October 21st." Thank you.
Thank you. Item 8A.
Animal Services Department, Presentation of a Proclamation Recognizing National Animals' Shelter Appreciation Week, November 2nd through the 8th, 2025.
Good morning, Amy.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Amy Toller with your Animal Services Department. As you see, I brought a crowd today. On behalf of my entire team here at Madera County Animal Services, I want to sincerely thank you all for your support and for recognizing National Animals Shelter Appreciation Week. Your support means the world to us and the animals that we serve. Every day, my staff and volunteers worked tirelessly, often behind scenes, to care for the lost, abandoned, neglected animals in our community. We are their advocates, their protectors, and most importantly, we are the voice for the voiceless. This recognition not only honors the hard work and dedication of our team, but also shines light on the importance of compassion, responsibility, and community support in animal welfare. We thank you for standing with us, for helping elevate the mission that we live every day of to protect, heal, and find hope for every animal that comes to our doors. Together, we are making a difference with you guys, one life at a time. I want to thank you for this year, too, for all the monumental steps we've taken with Animal Services, from our very first onsite TNR clinic, our Trap Neuter Release Clinic, that has done wonderful for our community here trapping and neutering and spaying feral cat program, and also for things like our pet limit ordinance, first for our county that has helped with dealing with people that are having too many pets on their possession. So, we appreciate your support and help and guidance with that as well. As far as helping us with multiple grants and getting funding for things that we can do for our community for free microchipping, free vaccinations, and also our free adoptions, we've been having a lot lately. So, thank you for your support. Thank you for everything you guys do for us, and thank you for recognizing us today.
Thank you. Amy, I just want to thank you and your, you have a small but very mighty team. Appreciate all the work that you do for our community. It's nice to see the faces behind all that work, so thank you so much for all that you do. Do any of my colleagues wish to say something? Supervisor Wamha.
Yes, thank you, Amy, and team behind, because each and every one of you do such an incredible and important job, and we understand that resources are limited, and we understand, everyone's shaking their head, right? We all know that Animal Services We all know that Animal Services has limited resources. And I just want to say, from me to you guys, thank you so much for what you guys individually contribute based on, on what you guys have to work with. I really think you guys do an incredible job. And Amy at the helm, you're doing a great job, and it's a reflection, you know, your team is a reflection of you. So with that, I just wanted to give my heartfelt thanks again to all the work that you guys do. I receive a lot of compliments about what you guys do and how you operate, and timeliness and all of those things with the limited resource you guys have. I really think it's amazing, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Supervisor Rogers?
Yeah, as Jordan said, with limited resources, it's, it's difficult, but you, it's a very sensitive area for people. It is for me, because I, I pick up a lot of strays, and people, you know, they, they go to a store and they get an animal, and they don't realize, it's like caring for a baby in some, most cases. And we're animal people at our house. We've got sheep and cows and chickens and dogs and cats, and... They entertain our lives and they're, become part of the family. So, you know, how they're treated is really important. It, I've always taught my, both my sons and then my grandkids now, I've got 10 grandkids, and I always tell them, you know, you never want to mistreat an animal. You want to, you want to treat your animals with respect and care, and because they're dependent on you, and it, it's, it's really a sad thing when people don't do that. And I appreciate your, what you do for this community, even with the limited resources, and how you do it. And it really comes across strong, because we hear about those kind of things. And it's been kind of quiet out there for the last, you know, while, and I like that. It's, it means something's going well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
None online.
Okay, I'll close public comment. I think what I'll do is I'll ask the team to come up in front of the dais. Amy, if you can join us in the back, so we can get a good group photo, and we will present the proclamation. Okay, thank you very much, item 8B.
Agricultural Commissioner, Seal of Weights and Measures Department, presentation of the 2024 Crop Report by the Agricultural Commissioner.
Welcome, Rusty.
Good morning, Chairwoman, Members of the Board. My name is Rusty Landsberger, Madera County Ag Commissioner, Seal of Weights and Measures. I'm here today to present the 2024 Crop and Livestock Report. But we'll just get right into it here, and here we go. So for 2024, it was a record-breaking year. The gross total was $2,376,948,000. So this is an increase of about $517 million. So I will caution you on this, that the figures contained in this report represent gross value of agricultural commodities and do not reflect production costs or net returns to producers. All prices noted are estimates based on the average price received by the producer. In order to ensure confidentiality, commodities produced by three or fewer growers are recorded in the miscellaneous categories in their commodity groups. So here we have just the leading 10 crops in Madera County over the past year as compared to 2023. And as you can see, they're basically commodities 3 through 6 just kind of interchange themselves from where they were in 2023. Some of that leads to some production, increase in production, some of it leads to increases in prices, so they kind of fluctuate and move in between as years go by. So highlights for Madera County. Overall, we have our harvested acres at 735,380 acres. We can see there the field crops, nut crops, nursery acreage, as well as vegetable crops and rangeland. What I would like to note on this is that in the United States, for agriculture production, Madera County is number 17 in the United States. In the state of California, in the California counties, Madera County ranks number 12. That's from the US Ag statistics that are done every five years, so that data is from 2022. So I'm sure we move up and down a point or two depending on the year. And as you can see on the right hand of that slide, Madera County is number one in fig production. And as you go down the list, almonds, raisins, pistachios, table grapes, we're all within the kind of the top 10 there. So this here is just in a kind of a harvested acres, kind of in each production category. And we can see through there, as you get down to the bottom, in 2023, we had 720,000 acres roughly harvested. In 2024, we had 735,000 acres harvested. And then their values are off to the right there, and it was also all, these are all contained in the report itself. Another highlight that I would also like to bring in is that here in Madera County, the commodities that are produced are shipped to over 76 different countries around the world. So my staff is out at the packing sheds and different locations when the commodities are being shipped, and we're issuing federal documents to make sure that those shipments make it through customs and border, so that they can enter the country according to their import requirements, and that they are received in good condition and in a timely manner. So just wanted to highlight that, and you can see some of the countries there on the bottom right that we ship to on a regular basis. So that's the end of my presentation. I have Carolina Flores here from my office. Stand up. This is her first year compiling the crop report for us, and so I just want to give a shout out to her for her excellent job in this. Deputy Heidi Wong, who's not here, she's on vacation, but she was also instrumental in getting this crop report put together.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Supervisor Poitras?
Thank you very much, Chair. Rusty, first of all, I have a confession to make, and then I just have an observation. You know, it says, "Do not open prior to the BOS meeting." I confess that I opened it up prior to the BOS meeting, probably about 8:55. So just wanted to throw it out there, you know, but guilty as charged. But I was really surprised to see that we're number four as far as almond production. I mean, I, here, you know, we've got Kern County, we've got Fresno County, Hohlerie, Stanislaw. We have a lot of what I call legacy almond-growing counties. I was just kind of surprised to see us at number four. Is that based on acres or total production, or what would that be?
I believe that's based on total production.
Total production, okay, good. Well, that's really good. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Supervisor Rogers?
With, with Sigma having a very large impact on, especially the white areas right now, seeing a $3,500 an acre valuation probably on most of the land. How, how do you see that projected affecting this year, 2025? What's your thoughts on that? And you don't have to be exact, and I won't hold you to it. But that, and then also with the, what was it called, the, where we had the fowl problem?
The avian influenza.
Avian flu, and then also, we also had some dairy issues with, with a fever going through dairy, so I address those things.
So I'll try to hit on some of those for you. The impacts of Sigma in the white areas specifically. With the cost of water, the cost of inputs across the board, that's going to be a driver on permanent crops that are put into the white areas, because obviously a permanent crop requires water year-round, where a annual crop only requires water when it's available, or if there's excess water and you have everything in place to plant an annual crop, or you dryland farm that type of ground, that can have an impact. This report itself, these are numbers that we get from the growers that we survey. So in January, we send out a survey to our producers and ask them to report their production totals and also the prices they received. And so we use their data, and we average things together, and sometimes we get a lot of reports, sometimes we don't. And so we work with multiple different areas to try to gather that data, so that we can come up with a good number. And we also work with our neighboring counties as well to find out if, you know, we're in the ballpark price-wise. If we have something that's just kind of outside of the norm, we try to work to make sure that we get those in the right areas. In regards to the avian influenza, in 2025, we did have some poultry houses that were depopulated because of the avian influenza, which actually some, and a duck farm as well. So we're going to have some production losses in our poultry. The dairy herds were impacted by avian influenza, which causes those cows to come out of the milk string and out of production, or they lose production for a while until those cows are no longer testing positive. So that's going to have an impact as well. What it actually is going to be, it's really hard. This year, a lot of the reporting sources that we had through United States Department of Agriculture, NASS, which is the National Ag Statistics Service, with the restructuring of the federal government, some of those reports are no longer available, and so we kind of had to really dig in this year and work with producers, work with other counties, work with California Department of Food and Ag, to come up with some really solid numbers that we could defend in our crop report. So there may be some fluctuations in some of the milk pricing and some of the poultry and some commodities as we go into 2025, but we're working through that now. And CDFA, California Department of Food and Ag, is supposed to assist the counties with some of those milk pricing and the milk volume numbers, because it's very hard to determine the average production per cow, as per dairy, and the prices they receive, because they're under multiple different contracts.
Right. You see any particular crop coming in that might be an annual crop rather than a permanent crop in, in some of those areas where I see a lot of tree land cleaned off right now?
You know, I haven't got a lot of feedback from the producers of what they're planning on coming back with. I think Sigma is still real, and they're dealing with it, and they're trying to understand it. And the cost of production is through the, is through the roof, just with all the inputs, water, fertilizer, just the seed itself, agricultural chemicals. So I think in the long term, I think they're trying to make decisions now that are going to affect them a year or two down the road. But planning-wise, I don't know. I think there's a little bit of a shift away from permanent crops into annual crops, and what they're going to be, I don't know. I know there's been some exploration in some other counties with agave and some drought-tolerant plantings.
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Do we have any public comment on this item?
None online.
None, I'll close it, and this is a presentation, so there's no action required. Thank you, Rusty. We really appreciate the presentation.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item 8D.
Library Department update by Krista Riggs, Library Director, on the results of the Madera County Library Community Survey.
Welcome, Krista.
Good morning, Chairwoman and Members of the Board. I'm Krista Riggs, Library Director, and I'm here this morning to share with you the results of our community survey. So we've had the survey running for three months, from June 9th to September 5th. We got the word out using our summer reading program kickoff over at Courthouse Park, social media, our website, posters and QR codes in our branches, and at various community meetings. And we had a nice response from across all of our service areas. The summaries for each location are in the agenda packet, but here are the results countywide. You can see that nearly 70% of respondents reported visiting the library daily, weekly, or monthly. Reasons why people didn't visit more often were that our operational hours didn't meet their schedule, or they're already using our digital collection online. 35% said that our hours were not as friendly as they could be, and 22% said they use our digital resources instead. But then, as far as for do current hours meet your needs, 85% reported that current library hours do meet their needs, either always, most of the time, or sometimes. As far as what people are using their libraries for, the top service by far was borrowing books, audiobooks, DVDs, and CDs. That's that tall bar on the first chart there. Other services frequently used are attending programs, events, and classes, borrowing ebooks and e-audiobooks, participating in the summer reading program, printing, copying, and faxing, especially at our chow-chilla library, that's a big business there, and children's programs, play spaces, and children's computers. As far as do library, do current library services meet your needs, 90% of respondents reported that current library services do meet their needs, either always, most of the times, or sometimes. And then for what additional services people would like to see, the top five choices were music or art events, movie screenings, which we already do at two of our branches, but that was good feedback, outdoor reading or community spaces, life skills or job training classes, which we do offer through our workshop, through our partnership with workforce development, but we're always looking for more opportunities there, and then also teen spaces and more comfortable seating. And then over half of our respondents say they frequently or occasionally request items from libraries in other counties to pick up at their local library through our consortium. We have reciprocal borrowing. So anybody can request an item from Mariposa to Bakersfield, and we have a network of vans and people working to bring those items here to Madera County, so our residents can check them out. But on the flip side, just under 70% say they don't venture outside of our county to check items in or out from libraries in other counties. So most of our patrons are using their libraries here in the county and not crossing county lines to visit other libraries. So Survey Monkey has a new feature where they have an AI button that will analyze the survey responses for you. So I thought I'd try that out to see what AI thought of our responses, and I'd like to just read for you what it kicked back to me. "The data suggests that the library is a valued and essential resource for the community. The survey results highlight several reasons why the library should continue to exist. A large majority of respondents use the library for borrowing books, audiobooks, DVDs, and CDs, and many also attend programs, events, and classes. The library provides crucial access to digital resources, technology, and community spaces, which are important to many users. Respondents express appreciation for staff performance, children's programs, and the library's role in community engagement and support. Responses indicate that the library is seen as a hub for learning and community development." Excuse me. "While a minority express concerns about hours, access, or specific services, the overall feedback is overwhelmingly positive. Overall, the survey responses suggest that the library is a vital resource for education, community connection, and access to information and technology." And I agree with AI on that. So takeaways, personally, my takeaways are that people want more of us, which is a great thing. They want more programs, more hours, more resources. They want more programs, more hours, more resources, more electronic and physical resources. And also that people really love their familiar, friendly faces at their local libraries, which means our team is doing a great job. My my staff are doing an amazing job connecting with their communities. The next steps, from what I see, we do need to be creative and look at ways to have our hours be more friendly to people who work during the day within our limited capacity of budgets and staffing. We also need to seek more sponsorships and grants. We're always busy writing grants, but we need to continue doing that and looking for donations for those music and art programs that our communities are desiring. And then because our strategic plan is wrapping up in December of this year, we'll need to gather even more community input to put together a new strategic plan to pave a path for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Supervisor Wamha.
Great, thank you so much, Krista, for this presentation. I know we've been working on this survey for a few months and crafting it and getting the word out regarding the survey. And I wanted to dispel any myths that, you know, we're looking at, you know, trying to get rid of our library or anything like that, that was never a part of the discussion. The only thing was, how do we get more engagement? Because of the hundred and sixty-five plus thousand residents we have, how many of those people either never or seldom use our library? And why? Why is that? So I was a little disappointed in the survey in terms of, I was hoping it was a little more bifurcated in terms of separating those who responded to the survey who never or seldom use the library and really expand on that. Because we all know that the people who frequent the library are typically going to say that the hours do meet their needs and that the services do meet their, you know, their, whatever they'd like to have in there. So that part is kind of skewed in, in, in my opinion. So I was really hoping to expand out on who doesn't use the library and why don't they use it? And really dive into how can we get more engagement on that front? And so can you speak to how many people actually of the residents of Madera County? How many people seldom or never use the library? Do you have any of that data regarding library cards? I don't know how you'd extrapolate that.
I can get that for you, definitely. As far as the survey, I have the numbers for the people who took the survey. But I can tell you as far as people who marked that they rarely or never use the library, forty-six percent noted that it was the hours of operation that kept them from visiting. So that is where we need to look and be more friendly to people that work a normal eight to five Monday through Friday and make hours available outside of that timeframe when most people are at work. Within that group also, who said rarely or never, twenty-seven point five nine percent said they use our digital resources instead. So that's nearly thirty percent that are using the library and our resources, they're just accessing it online. And a lot of times I use the analogy of a bank, you know, I don't go into my bank very often at all, especially since COVID. But the convenience of being able to access my account online, being able to do banking online, I think in the modern age, a lot of what we do in the library is the same way, that a lot of people are using our resources, are using our services, they're just using them online. But that's not to say our physical locations are so busy every day. We even had somebody yesterday that we had a ton of families and children in because it's conference time at the schools. And so we were really busy yesterday afternoon here in Madera. And somebody even said, is it always this busy in here? And so I think it's, you know, kind of a myth that we're not active and engaged anymore or busy, that we are seeing a lot of foot traffic every day, but we're also seeing an increase in online activity.
Yeah, and I would say that, you know, online or digital resources, that's essentially the same thing as using the library. So not accurate there. I do want to give a huge shout out to your team. We use the library for our community events, and it is a vital resource for folks that are close to the government center or things like that. Shout out to Jerika and the Rancho's crew out there for.
They are wonderful.
For all of the support and the people out there, absolutely love them. So thank you for this, and you're just an absolute pleasure to work with for our Library Director, and thank you for everything you do.
Thank you for your help and support as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Supervisor McCully.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it's no secret, people love their libraries, especially in Madera County. I know last time we looked at some of this data, we were far and above many of the other counties as far as performance and the number of people going and accessing our libraries. You know, I actually had the opportunity to meet with a resident out in Norfolk, probably about two months ago now. And they were actually explaining to me a period of time in which the library in Norfolk was shut down, and they felt the economic impacts to the community were pretty great as a result of that. And what they were explaining was that, you know, when people go visit the library, it's not just a stop off at the library, they're also going to the post office, they're getting some coffee, maybe they're grabbing lunch, they're doing other things in town that help drive our economy. And so when the library's not there, they go to different communities, whether it's Aubrey or Mariposa or Fresno, wherever that may be. So it's vitally important that we have these places for our residents. And we're just so fortunate that we have such a great team, you know, at the library, having great programming for not only our seniors and, you know, just everyday people, but especially our youth, you know, because we can get them there at a young age, help them understand what it is we're doing down there. I think later in life, there's so much more likely to utilize our services. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Supervisor Portress.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Krista, for your great work, you and your team at in our libraries, just not the local one, but everywhere in the county. Just a one observation, one question. You know, I think in regards to the use of the library, I think it's, there's some people that it's just in their normal routine. You know, it's something that I know of a certain family that I'm pretty close to in this town that uses your library quite a bit.
Yes, we see your grandkids quite often. We appreciate that.
Excellent. No, they really enjoy it and I know, you know, it's always been an important thing to get the kids to read. And there's others, I think, that just don't think about it or don't understand the value of of the library. So it's, it's those people that, you know, how do we reach them? You know, and again, it's a, it's, I think it's an internal thing within certain families, you know, where that's valued and other things are more valued. You can't do everything, you know, but it's a, within a family, there's only so many hours in a day, but I think that's, that's part of it. But, you know, the services are outstanding. But my question is, you mentioned music. And I know that the Arts Council, you know, I think that they have some element of music instruction or something, guitars and whatever. And, and of course, our school district, is there some kind of collaboration that could occur so that, you know, we're not, say, you don't have to reinvent the wheel? You know, it's kind of like where it's an additional venue to offer services? Just a question, throwing that out there.
Yeah, that's a great question. And if I can just speak to your point before as well, I agree completely. We want all children in Madera County to get into the routine of coming regularly and building up that relationship with their library. And as a former children's librarian, I always say we want to catch them when they're young and create those positive first experiences that will last their entire lifetime of knowing the library is a happy, welcoming place for everybody. To your second point, yes, that's a wonderful idea and something we will explore. In the past, we've had local music teachers who have their students do recitals at our library, and we have a piano at the Oakhurst Library. And then one of our friends at the library just donated her beautiful piano to our library here in Madera. And so that opens up all kinds of opportunities for us. So yes, that's a great idea. We'll look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Krista. At this time, do we have any public comment on this item?
None online.
Okay, I will close public comment. Thank you, Krista, for the presentation.
Thank you.
Item eight E.
County Administration Department, General Services Division, discussion and consideration of entering into an agreement with Quaring General LLC in the amount of eighteen million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-six cents for the design build related to the behavioral health services crisis still.
Stabilization.
Thank you. Stabilization unit and sobriety center project for twenty-one months period and authorize the chair to sign. Four votes are required.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Joel B. Gay, County Administrative Office. With me today is Jorge Mendoza from Kitchell, Project Manager for the CSU project. Just a little background, on June twenty-third, the county received notification of a conditional award for the Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program. In short, B-Chip Round Five Grant Application through DHCS for twenty-four point nine, just under twenty-five million dollars. BHS submitted application requesting the full twenty-five million in grant funding with a matching commitment from the county of just over two million between, and that split between opioid settlements funds and prop, BHS Prop sixty-three MHSA funding. On July twenty-five, twenty-three, the board approved a resolution to allow BHS to further pursue B-Chip Round Five Grant Funding through DHCS and start negotiations on a program funding agreement. On March eight, twenty twenty-four, your board fully executed the PFA and an agreement with Advocates for Human Potential, which is a third-party grant administrator for the B-Chip Grant Program. This PFA established a grant period from, grant performance period from March eight, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Approximately October twenty twenty-four, after all the legal requirements were met with AHP, the county received authorization to bid.
Good morning, Board, Jorge Mendoza. So I'm here to discuss the current status and what has happened, transpired since the fully PFA was executed. So on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, the county, we issued a request for statement of qualifications to propose prospective design builders to design and build a new behavioral health crisis stabilization and sovereign center facility. On May twenty-third of twenty twenty-five, we received four statement of qualifications from four DBEs. May relies upon the DB statement of qualifications, the board approved a selection committee who reviewed and ranked the top three DBEs. Those DBs were Quaring General LLC and Boulder and Associates, Harris Construction Company Incorporated, and Darden Architects, WE O'Neil Construction, and Perkins Eastman. On July, on June nineteen, twenty twenty-five, the county issued the notice of prequalification to the top three highest DBs, that's in accordance with Public Contract Code. On June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five, then we proceeded to release the request for proposals from those two, from those top three DBs. On August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five, the top three DBs submitted their proposals describing their team experience, project management plan, fee, proposed design concept, and design approach, as well as their preliminary design and construction schedule. The selection committee reviewed and evaluated all the proposals to determine which DBE offered the best value to the county of Madera. After review and consideration of the proposals received, the selection committee ranked the DBs with the overall score noted below, with Quaring General and Boulder Associates scoring the maximum of a thousand six hundred and sixty point fourteen, followed by Harris Construction with one thousand six hundred and nine and sixty point sixty-five. And then last, WE O'Neil, WE O'Neil Construction with one thousand five hundred and twenty-eight. It should be noted that both the top two DBs gained the extra points because of being a local incentive. So we did incentivize local participation by increasing five percent. Points in general in this election process is not just the driving factor, this is a best value selection. So things to consider under the best value are overall proposal and adherence to the RFP requirements, proposed fee, proposed schedule, proposed team experience, and proposed design concepts. The RFP did establish the guaranteed maximum price, the GMP, as eighteen million and a project completion of June thirtieth. Both of these were dictated by the grant. The DBs, you can see this in this table, how they came in. Quaring General came in under, that's just under eighteen million, and then indicated that they would complete the project by June thirtieth. Harris Construction came in a little, approximately two million over the GMP, and WE O'Neil came in just close to ten million over the GMP. The fee listed there is before adding allowances, those allowances are grant approved. Allowance one is plan check and permit fees, allowance two is service provider utility fees, and then allowance number three is a total survey and unforeseen when they're doing the site investigations. So current status, after reviewing and considering all items in the best value selection process, the selection committee determined that Quaring General LLC and Boulder Associates offered the best value to the county to design and construct the new BHS Crisis Stabilization and Sobriety Facility. Here you can see a 3D rendering of the proposed facility. The proposed plan, the proposed floor plan, it's approximately seventeen thousand two hundred and ninety square feet. It does provide a space for twelve adolescent in the CSU space, twelve adults in the CSU space, and then sixteen sovereign centers. This should be noted that the, the RFP only indicated a minimum requirement of eight, so they're putting more, which is actually good for expansion in case the county needs it in the in the future. And then here you see a proposed site plan. One of the driving factors for one of the selection committee members was if you've ever been to the site, there's big, large, beautiful trees in the back, their design concept maintains those trees and keeps it as a outdoor recreational area.
So staff's recommendation is to enter an agreement with Quaring General LLC for the design construction of the new BHS Crisis Stabilization Center in the amount of eighteen million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-six cents, which includes allowances one through three. That concludes our presentation, we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Joel, thank you, Jorge. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? None, I'll open it up to public comment. Did we receive any public comment on this item?
None online.
I'll close public comment, bring it back to the board for action.
I'll move to approve the contract.
A second.
We have a first and a second, roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Portress.
Yes.
Supervisor Wamha.
Yes.
Supervisor McCully.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes, five zero.
I want to thank staff for their efforts and good, good reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight F.
County Administration Department, discussion and consideration to adopt a resolution approving the documents and actions relating to the execution and delivery of the property lease to finance a Riverstone Fire Station and other public improvements, four votes are required.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jessica Leon County Administration. The item before you is a resolution related to the fire station number six, also known as the Riverstone Fire Station. The resolution allows for a maximum principal amount of eleven million dollars with an annual interest rate not to exceed four point five percent. Based on the current construction estimates, the total projected cost estimate is for fourteen point five million. The current amount of available fire impact fees is just about five million, leaving the current estimated financing needs of just around nine point, just under nine point five million. Staff recommend the principal amount of ten point five million payable over a twenty-year term at a four point three eight percent interest rate. Keep in mind, the debt service of this financing would be fully covered through fire impact fees collected straight from the development, meaning no impact on the county general fund. And with that, staff is available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions, comments from the board? Supervisor Wamha.
Just quickly, I wanted to thank you because, you know, for giving that explanation, because a lot of people think like, hey, you know, these new areas get all the attention, these new areas are getting all of these amenities and resources. They are paying for all of it, and it's not just them that benefits, it's the greater surrounding area. So whether we're looking at, you know, fire stations or any of these other infrastructure upgrades that is borne fully on behalf of development, it also benefits others around because having a fire station at twelve and forty, doesn't just benefit Riverstone or those residents, it benefits everyone in the surrounding area. So thank you for noting that.
Thank you. Supervisor Rogers.
I appreciate my colleague bringing that out. That, that is a, an important concept. We've developed these CSAs to be self-supporting, and so they are really, the developments, both Riverstone and Tesoro Viejo that have come online, are a boon to. both Riverstone and Tesoro Viejo that have come online are a boon to the rest of the county in that sense. And so we continue to reap the benefits of these well-crafted development agreements that no longer pose a liability on the county as far as maintenance districts, but we have these CSAs that are self-supported by these developments. So I really appreciate the way that's crafted, and I wouldn't do it any other way. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
None online.
I'll bring it back for action.
Move to approve.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Wamha.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras.
Yes.
Supervisor McCully.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes, five zero.
I'm going to skip to 9A so we can get Jessica back to the office. 9A.
Board of Supervisors, acting as the Madera County Public Finance Authority. Board of Directors, Public Finance Authority, County Administration Department, Discussion and Consideration to Adopt a Resolution Improving the Documents and Actions Relating to the Execution and Delivery of a Property Lease to Finance the Riverstone Fire Station and Other Public Improvements. Four votes are required.
Since it's related, I'd like to keep it together. Thanks.
Yes, so similar resolution mirroring the one that you just approved. This is now just the board acting as the Board of Directors for the Madera County Public Finance Authority.
Any questions, comments? Any public comment on this item?
None online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
A second.
Call for the vote, please.
Director Wamha.
Yes.
Director Rogers.
Yes.
Director Poitras.
Yes.
Director McCully.
Yes.
Director Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes, five zero.
Thank you. Item 8G.
Public Works Department Administrative Services Division Discussion and Consideration of Approval of Receipt of Unanticipated Revenue Number 25-033 in the amount of $16,663,744 derived from Avenue 16 Project dash cash payments and interest to Avenue 12 Projects dash building and improvements for fiscal year 2025, 2026, and four votes are required.
Dominic.
Good morning, Matt, excuse me. Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Dominic Tyborski, Public Works Director. And before you this morning to request approval of the receipt of $16,663,744 in unanticipated revenue for the Avenue 12 Improvement Project. The Avenue 12 Project Fund was recently created in anticipation of receiving revenue from the developers who are under contract to fund the improvement project, which is currently under construction. Additionally, the fund was created as the agreement requires the county to keep the funds separate and apart from any other funds. The Funding and Reimbursement Agreement, Madera County Contract Number 12405-22 states Groveland Development Corporation, Riverstone Development LLC and Lennar Homes of California LLC are required to make deposits to fund the Avenue 12 improvements. As such, invoices were developed based on the sum total of executed agreements for right-of-way construction and construction support. And upon receipt of those revenues, we will utilize those to cash flow and pay for the construction of the project. So this time, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dominic. Any questions, comments from the board? Supervisor Rogers.
Well planned, well conceived. Thank you.
Anyone else? Supervisor Wamha.
Just Avenue 12 on its way. So appreciate all the work that has been happening on this corridor for many, many years in the past, and we're finally getting there. Obviously, this should have been done a long time ago, but hey, no time like the present. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item?
None online.
I'll close public comment, bring it back for action.
Move to approve.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Wamha.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras.
Yes.
Supervisor McCully.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes, five zero.
Thank you. Item 8H.
Public Works Department Administrative Services Division Discussion and Consideration of Approval of Receipt of Unanticipated Revenue Number 25-032 in the amount of $5,936,373 derived from HSR Amendment 2, H O M 15-02 dash fund balance, inter-fund revenue and interest on cash to buildings and improvements for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Four votes are required.
Just to clarify, is that $5,836,000 or 900?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Dominic.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the Board. Before you this morning to request approval of the receipt of $5,836,373 in unanticipated revenue derived from the High-Speed Rail Remediation Fund for the design and construction of Peck Boulevard. A High-Speed Rail Remediation Fund was created to mitigate local impacts of the California High-Speed Rail Project. Your board has elected to utilize this fund to cash flow projects which otherwise may be financially constrained. As such, Public Works is requesting utilization of this fund for the Peck Boulevard Roadway Design and Construction Project. In addition to the fund balance of 3.23 million and interest on cash of 80,000, revenue of 2.53 million is available due to Public Works Transit repaying a recent loan, allowing for the total 5.84 million to become available. Peck Boulevard, from Avenue 10 to Valley Children's Boulevard, also known as Avenue 9, is a much-needed north-south corridor, which will help alleviate increasing traffic circulation impacts due to the rapid growth in the area. While this improvement is part of the Gunner Ranch requirements to construct, with the number of additional homes currently being constructed in Riverstone, the county elected to move forward this project now by utilizing this funding source, which will be repaid through special taxes collected within CFD Number 2022-2 Improvement Area 1. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Dominic. Any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor McCully.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So how do we ensure that all those funds are going to be repaid through the special district? Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Absolutely. So we are actually in the process of crafting a, an agreement with the parties that are responsible. So Gunner, between Gunner and the county, so it earmarks and identifies those funds from the EIFD and CFD to go to repay this loan.
And so that agreement's not finalized yet, and that is not spelled out in the EIFD currently?
The agreement is not finalized. We are in the process of completing that agreement. We do have a draft agreement, which I will be bringing before your board.
So I guess I'm just a little confused as why we're seeing this item before the agreement finalized.
So we are, that's a good question. We are anticipating this project moving forward, so we are requesting that to establish the account now in anticipation of receipt of the funds. If you'd rather wait, we could certainly table this item, and I could bring the agreement back before your board prior to doing.
I'm certainly not interested in jumping through hoops or anything like that, but I do, you know, get concerned that we don't have, you know, everything buttoned up tightly before we move forward. Is it possible that we can, you know, work on approving this item today or take it up? And then, you know, before we take those next steps to actually start the construction process, we get that agreement finished?
Absolutely. In fact, construction will be a ways out. We have started preliminary design. You know, the alignment has already been established. A lot of the information is already in place. We're working on acquiring right-of-way, which those are things that we need to do anyway, whether we move forward with this project at the county level. But yeah, there's certainly time to get that agreement executed prior to any construction funds being expended.
And then lastly, as far as the EIFD goes, this project is currently spelled out within conditions of the, that is correct. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
It's correct.
Supervisor Rogers? Did you have some?
He answered my, he got the question.
Supervisor Poitras.
Chair, thank you. I just have a question regards to, once the loan is, is enacted, how long would you estimate it's going to take to repay the loan from revenues, special revenues collected?
So at this point, I don't have a good handle on the timeframe. My anticipation, it's going to take a number of years. So it will essentially take this money out of play for a number of years. It's, in my opinion, money will spend. It's a much needed, much-needed improvement project, but I would anticipate possibly five to 10 years.
And what types of projects might be compromised because of this money being taken out of play?
So in the past, I know we've used this money for Road 200 Bridge. I know, as I mentioned, we just repaid money from transit that we utilized. So a number of construction projects, some probably not even identified yet, will be tabled as.
That's nice to know. Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have any public comment on this item?
None online.
I'll bring it back. What's the pleasure of the board, Supervisor Rogers?
One more question. What specifically would be the urgency to do this project? I mean, utilizing these funds ties them up for the foreseeable future. I know we've had projects that, that utilize these funds. It's really important to have that, that backstop. What's the urgency?
So the urgency is within the Riverstone Development, there are thousands of additional homes that are going to be constructed on top of what's already built there. And so, you know, right now, the primary relief point is either to go through Avenue 12 or take Lanes Bridge to get to State Route 41. And yeah, as you know, that's already impacted Avenue 12. We are making strides towards that improvement. However, on the south end of the development, there's quite a bottleneck. And so in anticipation of all those additional homes and additional residents, the county's trying to be proactive and provide for that ingress egress. As I mentioned, it is a requirement of the Gunner Ranch development. However, we don't anticipate that project or any of those projects within that development to move forward anytime soon. So we can either wait for that development to build it as they are required, or we can provide for it now. And at this point, staff has elected to, to move forward with that project.
Yeah. I don't, I'd almost like to hear my colleague, what he thinks about that.
Yeah, if I may.
Your, your district.
Yeah, Madam Chair. So this particular improvement for Peck Boulevard is one of these proactive things that, you know, I wish the county would have done many, many years ago when looking at these types of developments. You know, once we reach a certain milestone, a number of homes, we'll have X done as far as a road improvement. Once we reach another milestone of homes, we'll have, you know, level Y of improvements done. And if you guys have driven this area or been in this area, the southern end of the Riverstone Development is already being built out with houses, and it will, and it has a southern exit point onto Avenue 10, which is a very rudimentary and, and road in, in poor repair already right now. And if you go out there during any time of, of commute.
Busy.
It is, it is a nightmare, and it is only going to get worse. Those traveling on Avenue 10 dumping on the Lanes Bridge, the queue that is on Lanes Bridge for those trying to get on, on 41 is, it is really bad. And so we've already been working with Caltrans to make two turn lanes. We've worked on light timing issues, and Peck Boulevard cannot come fast enough. So I would encourage my colleagues to move as quickly as we can on this project because it's already going to be later than, than what is needed, quite frankly. But, you know, I'm glad that we're getting on this now. I do appreciate that.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I just have one other question. I just have a comment. I mean, I just have a concern that, you know, this thing's going to be out there so long, you know, these funds without any source of repayment. And, you know, the world I come from, you know, there's always a defined source of repayment over a defined period of time. And, you know, to have these funds tied up, you know, for that period of time at the expense of other projects around the county, I, I have a problem with that. So I, I also, Supervisor McCully talked about, you know, not having the agreement with Gunner before we move ahead. And I know that, you know, maybe a time or two, there's been an issue trying to get a, something going with Gunner. I don't know. I just heard that once in a while, you know? That's happened. And so I really wouldn't feel comfortable until, moving forward, until that is done, and as well as projects, you know, around the county that, you know, could be compromised. I know that right now, we don't know of some, but there could be others that we could identify. And, and do we have a, some kind of a program that has been changed to accommodate this particular project? You know, I know that, you know, when we talk about different projects around the county that, you know, we do have a priority list, and so has anything changed there?
Nothing has changed. This project was identified as a high priority, so in seeking funding sources, a high-speed rail fund was identified. It is your board approved to be used to cash flow projects as long as there's a defined revenue source to repay that. So we do feel that it fits the, the criteria. But again, it will likely lock this money up for.
So, you know, again, I'd like to see that Gunner contract completed before, you know, we move forward on this. But, or maybe we could approve it subject to that particular agreement.
Well, and I think CEO Travers wanted to chime in, but I could tell you certainly we would not enter into a construction contract without that agreement in place. We've already started with the preliminary design, and we could fund that, you know, with public works funds or road funds or other funding sources if need be. But I certainly understand your concern.
Supervisor McCully, before CAO Traver.
Appreciate that. Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I think just one thing I want to make known, we referenced the Road 200 Bridge previously, and one of the things I loved about that project was we were able to utilize these dollars, get that project done like three or four years in advance, which, you know, on the backend saves the county a ton of money because we're doing it in today's dollars rather than, you know, four years down the line, which, so the need to do it quickly, I appreciate that, or the desire to get it done. Certainly, you know, when Rio Mesa gets completed, we're going to see even more traffic over there. I can only imagine people coming over from Tesoro Viejo, trying to skip around 41. But perhaps it would be more comfortable for the board if we were able to come back with another presentation that kind of expanded upon the use of the EIFD, the projects within the EIFD, how long we actually anticipate to recoup these funds and repay the loan. You know, what are the consequences of this loan being, you know, maxed out? You know, maybe, maybe we can just get another presentation with some more details that allows this board to be a little bit more comfortable with the decision we're making as we move forward. Just a suggestion to my colleagues.
Thank you. CAO Traver.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of brief things. This is a certainly unique item when you look at some of the other previous, just previous actions. In a lot of ways, it's a result of, of not having that perfect crystal ball back in 2007, when the board at that time approved what's now known as Riverstone. It was always, and if you read those documents, assumed that Gunner and the hospital would be well on its way through build-out and development of this road. These infrastructure pieces would be in place prior to the first roof going up out in Riverstone. And that just, we have not seen that. I, I would just say, right, this is a budget creation of a budget. It's not, and you can certainly, I think Supervisor Poitras had spoke to, place some conditions or directions to staff on that. Gunner has a commitment to fund this improvement through those CFD dollars and those funds. So that, that is a hard commitment that is there. But I just wanted to throw that in there, that if you look through those documents from '07, even to the item just before this on the fire station, it talks about the fire engine that's in the Gunner Ranch Fire Station moving to this newly constructed Riverstone Fire Station. So again, it was always envisioned, you've had that hospital since 95, that we'd see the growth and the development. Certainly, our Public Works Director, I think, is accurate in laying out that proposed potential timeline. It could be significantly faster. It all is governed on development and build-out, right? So I, I just wanted to. So I just wanted to add those little caveats in there as well.
Thank you.
Just one last comment. I know the project's needed. That's my go-to when I'm going to the east part of Fresno. And so that's, I know that's a fact. I mean, it's very, very busy intersection, very encumbered with heavy traffic. So that's not my question. Anyway, thank you. I wanted to add that.
Okay. Well, what is the pleasure of the sport?
Chair, I like Supervisor McCauley's idea of making a presentation so we get a better idea of the overall picture and so forth. I, you know, give you time to get the Gunner agreement together, but I would like to see that.
Is that a motion?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, if we need to make a motion or...
And can I discuss that? Or are you giving me a second before we discuss?
County Council?
The discussion can occur if it dies for a lack of a second.
So if we, what would be the difference of that versus approving it with the caveat that the agreement would have to be in place prior to construction?
From my perspective? So we're continuing to move forward with the design. So it's not going to hold the project up. Obviously, we can't go to construction without the significant funding. But for right now, there would be no impact. So I'd be happy to come back with that.
Okay, that's fine. And I'll second that then.
Okay, we have a first and a second. Is that motion clear, County Council?
Yes, it's clear to me. I just asked and it's clear to the director.
Thank you. We have a first and a second roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Poitras.
Yes.
Supervisor Wamhaugh.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor McCauley.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes 5-0.
Thank you.
What I love about this board, being able to discuss things outcome to a consensus and move in a good direction.
Absolutely. Item 8I.
Discussion and consideration of entering into an agreement with California Department of Transportation Cooperative Agreement Number 06-1828, Caltrans for Caltrans Oversight During Construction of the State Route 41 Expressway Project, and authorize the chair to sign.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Before you this morning, request approval of a cooperative agreement with Caltrans for oversight during the construction of the State Route 41 Expressway Project, and authorize the chairwoman to sign. The department is currently preparing for the State Route 41 Expressway Project Construction Phase, which is anticipated to commence in March of 2026. This project will upgrade the existing facility from Avenue 10 and 1/2 to a point north of Avenue 12 into a four-lane expressway, transitioning into a four-lane conventional highway extending just north of Avenue 15. The department has engaged Caltrans as the lead NEPA and SEQA agency on this project to provide environmental monitoring and oversight as required through Cooperative Agreement Number 06-1828. The cost for this cooperative agreement to provide the environmental monitoring is $2,164,970. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dominic. Do we have any questions from board? Do we have any public comment?
None online.
Bring it back to the board.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Wamhaugh.
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras.
Yes.
Supervisor McCauley.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes 5-0.
Item 8J.
Public Works Department Administrative Services Division. Discussion and consideration of entering into an agreement with National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for a credit transfer of vernal pool credit and aquatic resource credits for environmental mitigation requirements on the State Route 41 Expressway Project, and authorize the Public Works Director to sign.
Dominic.
Madam Chair. Before you this morning, to request approval of an agreement with the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation for environmental mitigation requirements on the State Route 41 Expressway Project, and authorize the Public Works Director to sign. During the environmental review phase, it was determined that the project will impact both aquatic and vernal pool habitats. The purpose of the agreement is to purchase in lieu fee credits to mitigate these impacts. Specifically, the county will purchase 0.54 vernal pool credits in the southern Sierra Foothills vernal pool service area and 1.95 aquatic resource credits in the unallocated program area in the total amount of $1,773,560. These credits will be used to satisfy the project's mitigation requirements resulting from anticipated habitat impacts. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dominic. Any questions, comments from the board? Supervisor McCauley.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, as far as the credits go, when we purchase these credits and they go to NIFWIF, how are they spending those credits? Is it directly on the project and like mitigation projects adjacent to the project? Or does it go into like a pool of funds that could be taken advantage of by, say, the San Joaquin River Conservancy?
So the credits actually go to these two particular areas. So one is in the southern Sierra Foothills service area. And then the other is in the allocated program area. So by understanding the way it works, you know, we can't mitigate on-site. So by buying these credits, they mitigate for our impacts elsewhere.
So, but I guess.
So it's an in lieu.
Fish and Wildlife doesn't have a specific project that they're going to use these funds on? Or do they use them as like a grant opportunity? I think that's what I'm asking.
And that's where I got a little confused. It's actually not Fish and Wildlife, the agency. It's Fish and Wildlife Foundation. And so, yes, they use the credits to provide mitigation elsewhere.
Okay.
Anyone else? Do we have any public comment on this item?
None online.
I'll bring it back for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McCauley.
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras.
Yes.
Supervisor Wamhaugh.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 8K.
Public Works Department Administrative Services Division. Discussion of entering into the Kennedy Table Credit Sale and Transfer Agreement with Caltrans and Kennedy Table Conservation Bank for the environmental mitigation requirements for State Route 41 Expressway Project, and authorize the Public Works Director to sign.
Madam Chair. Before you this morning, to request approval in agreement with Caltrans and Kennedy Table Conservation Bank for environmental mitigation requirements on the State Route 41 Expressway Project, and authorize the Public Works Director to sign. During the environmental review phase, it was determined that the project will impact 7.63 acres of vernal pool fairy shrimp habitat, thereby requiring mitigation. Purpose of the agreement is to provide purchase credits from the Kennedy Table Conservation Bank to mitigate the project's vernal pool fairy shrimp impacts. The county will purchase through this agreement 7.63 species credits in the amount of $462,800. Credits will be used to satisfy the project's mitigation requirements resulting from anticipated habitat impacts. Again, be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dominic. Any questions or comments from this board? Do we have any public comment?
None online.
I'll bring it back for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor McCauley.
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras.
Yes.
Supervisor Wamhaugh.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. We'll give you a break, Dominic. Item 8L.
Social Services Department Veteran Services Division. Discussion and consideration to adopt a resolution in support of Operation Green Light for veterans by converting municipal and residential lighting to green in honor of the nation's veterans from November the 4th through November the 11th, 2025.
Thank you. Welcome, Deborah.
Good morning. Deborah Martinez, Director of Social Services. And, but I'm here representing my Office of Veteran Services Office. The Veteran Services Officer is actually at an annual conference, or he would be here, Joshua Christopherson. We're here asking for you to adopt a resolution acknowledging the week of November 4th through November 11th as Operation Green Light. This is in order to show our support for those who have served or are serving in our military service. So I purchased some green bulbs that Vivian Garcia, who's our Deputy Director over Self-Sufficiency, is going to provide to you. The idea is during that week to turn as many lights green as possible so that everyone out there who has served or is serving is aware that we are thinking of them and offering them their support. So porch lights, our business offices, anything that we can think of that we could put a green bulb out, we appreciate your support and adoption of this resolution.
Thank you, Deborah. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Poitras.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much, Deborah. Great, great idea. I was just asking you, you're talking about the converting municipal and residential lighting. Are you talking about residential lighting that, just like handing out light bulbs or?
So the idea is that all our businesses built, any kind of government buildings, anybody that we can ask that would convert their lighting to it. So we're actually trying to do some kind of cover on our lights in our complex in order for them to reflect green. The bulbs, I'm going to put on my porch light. The idea is just wherever you can have light bulb, put this, any kind of light bulb that's green to show her support just during that one week.
Gotcha. Very good. I was just, based on what I read here, I didn't know if we were going to go out and buy a bunch of green light bulbs and put them on everybody's houses or something.
I bought extras for my staff too, but yeah, they're not all that easy to find, actually, so.
Gotcha. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Supervisor Wamhaugh.
Now, where can people find these? Because if we put it out, you know, as a marketing thing, I think it would be wise to at least let people know the best place or most accessible place to pick these up.
Well, you know, I tried the dollar store, but no luck. So what actually, I went through Amazon, got, had to go through two different sources to get the number of boxes that I bought. But, so I went through Amazon, which is not a good thing in terms of Madera County revenue. But I couldn't find it at Dollar Street and I was in a hurry.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you. Supervisor Rogers.
Yeah, I immediately thought of a solution and I'm going to utilize this on my property. I have hundreds of LEDs on the outside floodlights. They're, the light is inside. I'm going to put green film over the top of those and it'll shine through. So there's no heat involved in those lights, LEDs. So it'll work perfectly. If you have a LED light, you can put green film over it. And I'm going to buy some green film and I'm going to do them all that way.
That's a great solution. That's actually what we're working with General Services to do in terms of our lighting of our buildings because we can do the same thing.
And I really appreciate the concept, supporting our troops and those who have served our country, given the ultimate sacrifice.
Well, and given they may not be paychecks on the first, so, you know, at least we can do a show green light.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor McCauley.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just really quickly, want to give a shout out to the team that actually goes out and puts all the light bulbs in and makes the changes. So thank you for everybody doing that. Also want to make note that it is not just the Marines 250th birthday. It's also Army, Air Force and Navy. I was speaking with a gal who was in the Navy just the other day. She said, "Yeah, we don't celebrate our birthday quite like the Marines do." But, you know, there's going to be a great celebration up in Owani. So Supervisor, if you'd like to join me, I'd be happy to have you as my guest. But just want to make sure that's known and then again, express my gratitude for the team, all the efforts. So thank you.
Yes. And so I'm here again, just representing our Veteran Services Officer and also my son is a veteran of Afghanistan, so obviously we're going to do our best. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, thank him and all of our veterans for their service. And I just want to add that we've been doing this for a couple of years now. And if you haven't seen the county building lit up in green, it's quite a sight. So I hope that our PIO over there will share that information so that when our building is lit up in green, the folks in the public know why.
I'd like the support in that video as well. I'd like to be part of the support.
Do we have any public comment on this item? We have none online?
None online.
I'll bring it back for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Wamhaugh.
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras.
Yes.
Supervisor McCauley.
Yes.
Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. Item 8M.
Board of Directors, Special Districts, County Service Area Number 22C, Gunner Ranch, Public Works Department Administrative Services Division. Discussion and consideration of approval of receipt of unanticipated revenue Number 25-031 in the amount of $432,970 derived from CSA 22C Gunner Ranch West Service. Additional information is listed on the agenda. Four votes are required.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andrea Soldati, Deputy Director with Public Works. Before you today is a receipt of unanticipated revenue for water proceeds for the newly developed Gunner Ranch West Community Water System. Back in August, we brought before you a resolution to move forward with the dedication of that water system to us to be the water purveyor. We are actually, as of this week, going through that dedication process for that water system to become ours. And with that, we need to be able to accept the revenue from what we would call the user, which is mainly Valley Children's Campus. So this RUR allows us to accept the revenue from Valley Children's in order for us to be able to pay for regular operation and maintenance expenses for the water system. In years moving forward, this will be adopted in what we call our Blue Book, which is our special districts budgets from '26, '27 moving forward. So it will just function and look like all of our other water system budgets. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you, Andrea. Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have any public comment on this item?
None online.
I'll bring it back for action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Wamhaugh.
Yes.
Supervisor McCauley.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras is absent. Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. Item 8N.
Board of Supervisors, Department District Number 1. Discussion and consideration to adopt a resolution expressing the county's support of the Second Amendment and the right of people to keep and bear arms.
That. I'll hand it over to Supervisor Wamhaugh.
Great. Thank you, Chair. So this morning, this resolution simply reaffirms what we already believe and practice here in Madera County, that the right of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms is fundamental to both freedom and safety. It doesn't create new laws or change how we operate. What it does is make clear that Madera County stands with its residents in protecting their constitutional rights while promoting responsible firearm ownership. Sheriff Tyson Pogue has reviewed and supports this resolution as well. Meanwhile, recent state laws signed by the governor focus on restricting common law-abiding citizens' access to firearms in places. Heavier burdens on compliant residents while doing little to address criminals who ignore those laws. This resolution also emphasizes our ongoing commitment to expedite CCW permit applications and to continue offering the required firearm safety training free of charge to eligible county residents. And this is something we've been doing for quite some time and we're very proud of that. That ensures that responsibility and access go hand in hand. So at its core, this is about reaffirming local values, freedom, responsibility, and trust between the community and its government. It's about saying that here in Madera County, we will stand firm in defending the rights guaranteed to the people under the Constitution. And I'm available if any questions.
Thank you, Supervisor. Do we have any questions or comments from my colleagues? Supervisor Rogers.
Yes, I just want to read the Second Amendment. It's very brief. "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." There's been much to do and much focus on the word militia. However, the framers of the Constitution made it very clear that the right of the people, it's the right of the people that shall not be infringed. And they made very clear who the people are in the preamble to the Constitution. "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution of the United States." Yes, I know that by heart. I learned it in the eighth grade. Everybody should learn it because those principles found in the Bill of Rights are the basis of our way of life. They are what we believe in and what we've operated on under the rule of law. And you ask, why is it necessary that we reaffirm such thing? Well, because it's under attack all the time. It's continually under attack. And I would just like to say that, you know, the lawlessness of others is not an excuse to strip the rights of law-abiding citizens. It's not an excuse. It never has been. We don't eliminate cars because... We don't eliminate cars because there are reckless drivers or DUIs or other law, laws broken while people are driving. We don't do that. And there are plenty of other weapons of choice for people to commit crimes as well. So, you know, it's just really amazing to me that we are questioning the standards of law that have been established for these 250 years of our freedom. We've lived well with them and we're going to continue to live well with them. There's, there are always consequences in any society for a free society. And what, I think it was Madison who made it very clear that a free society depends on the moral character of those that are governed by it. What we have a problem today with is not guns, we have a problem with moral character in this country. And we need to get back to law-abiding behavior. I'm really thankful that our president is enforcing law, that he's enforcing it without, without hypocrisy or without prejudice, that it's across the board. And law, what law is good for one is good for the other, and we need to continue to live peacefully. Law and order brings peace and that's the purpose of it. Live peacefully. And I'm thankful for these Bill of Rights and I gladly support every one of them.
Thank you. Supervisor McCully.
Thank you, Chair. So I just want to reiterate, this is not like a Second Amendment sanctuary county initiative. This doesn't actually change anything from a practical standpoint within the county. Is that correct?
This is essentially planting the flag and saying that we are reaffirming that these rights are inherent to us and that this county stands with the Second Amendment and the Constitution. It essentially reaffirms many of the things that we already do. And so is this a new law that we're enacting? No, it's not. This is just reaffirming that us as county leaders stand up for the Second Amendment and provide access to free training that we've always done and expedited CCW permit applications. And essentially just telling the people that we value the Constitution and we value their right to be able to defend themselves and to be able to have an individual right to bear arms.
So it reaffirms the oath that we take when we take office.
That's correct.
As we're going to protect the Constitution of California as well as.
That's correct. And a lot of this was born out of, you know, state laws that were recently signed but continue to get signed by our governor that continue to erode those constitutional freedoms that are afforded to us. And just to let people know that we are with them and we are not with those who are trying to constantly strip those rights away.
And I appreciate that. I think it's important we support the community. You know, my former boss was a big hunter. I always enjoy his elk turkey when he'd come back from the vet. My dad actually tried to get into politics back in 2007. He tried to incorporate Oakhurst as a community, received numerous death threats as a result. And man, he's a gun owner because he believes in protecting himself. But I believe this board needs to be acting with intention. I think we should be taking up items that are extremely relevant to our board, that we have influence over, that we, you know, support the entire community, not just 60% of it. I want to read a quote or a post that was on your feed Supervisor, you posted about this yesterday. And so the gentleman says, "Shoot politicians. It's your right. The Second Amendment isn't about hunting deer or protecting yourself, about shooting tyrants who force unreasonable laws in the name of more control." But that's not what I'm about. I'm not about promoting this kind of action. I'm not about promoting division between 60% and 40%. I don't think items like this have any place at this board. I understand people's concerns about the state of California eroding the Second Amendment. I understand those concerns. But I don't believe it's this board's place to be taking up these types of items. We've had a long tradition in Madera County of not taking up these kinds of items and I think it's benefited this board tremendously. It benefits the community, it allows us to work together, and it allows us to be productive for the people that we serve, all of them. And I don't believe this does that. So I will be abstaining from this item. Do appreciate your perspective, no disrespect, but I don't believe we should be taking up these types of items. I believe it's divisive, believe that it erodes our community and just makes it harder for us to do our job at the end. Thank you.
Supervisor Portress.
Thank you, Chair. I am fine with the resolution. I've had a chance to review it and as Supervisor Wamhoff mentioned, it's simply reaffirming the Second Amendment. The one, there's one word I had a problem with and that's the word sanctuary. And I think a lot of you will appreciate this. We hear a lot about sanctuary cities, you know, for immigration, and we know that that word sanctuary means absolutely nothing. It is a, federal law trumps whatever the city councils or mayors or whatever they want to call their cities. Across the street, they spent hours talking about what they're going to call their city and they've decided it's going to be a welcoming city. What does that mean? You know, it's just, I hope it's welcoming. I mean, I, as a former city council member, as a member of the Board of Supervisors, we're welcoming. We want business, we want residence, we want commerce, you know, so we're very welcoming. But, but it's one of those things where, you know, we're not making a law. Truly, it is not a sanctuary county or the Second Amendment or some of the laws because we have the Second Amendment already, so we don't have to be a sanctuary county to still be, to still follow the Second Amendment. That said, I understand where if you throw the word in sanctuary, it gets a lot of attention. You know, if we just said that we were a Second Amendment county, we were affirming that, that's kind of boring to people. But once they hear the word sanctuary, it's like, whoa. In fact, I think if we were affirming the, just reaffirming the Second Amendment, we wouldn't have any of these cameras here today, you know, and a lot of attention. That word sanctuary gets attention. So I, I am going to move forward. I've kind of gotten past it, I get it. But I just wanted to let everybody know that, you know, the laws that we have still stand and, and we are following the Constitution and all of the amendments. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor. My question is for county council. Are there any implications with calling ourselves a sanctuary county? Do we have any liability? What's, what are the, what are the?
Legal ramifications?
Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, having looked into this resolution, there are no legal ramifications as of today that would impact this county or any prior action. As was mentioned, it might hold a perception or a meaning, however, there are, there is no significant risk with using that term. I would, I know this wasn't asked, but I would also like to remind the board about their rules and the voting procedures in case it was mentioned, not in case, but it was mentioned that Supervisor may abstain. And your rules say a member's silence or abstention shall be recorded as an affirmative vote. That's very common unless that member was disqualified from voting, which I do not believe we've heard today, or recuses themselves, in which case an abstention shall be recorded and considered not voting. So just a technical mention of the rules. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you for that. And I guess my other question, follow-up to that, I know that Supervisor Portress alluded to it, that, you know, some jurisdictions have, have called themselves sanctuary jurisdictions for immigration enforcement. I know that during COVID, there were some jurisdictions that weren't complying. And so I guess my question is, or my, where I'm going with this is, does this have any implications for any type of funding? I know it was noted that when jurisdictions were calling themselves sanctuary cities, the federal government threatened to withhold funding. Is, is that, what is the likelihood of that to happen from the state level?
Madam Chair, as far as I'm aware, there hasn't been any claims that federal or state funding would be withdrawn, but going forward, I can't tell you that there is absolutely no risk there. It's which why it was very specific in saying, in when I reviewed it at this time. However, that doesn't mean.
Right. And I just ask, I want to put that on the record. I do support the Second Amendment, the Constitution. I think that this is more of a ceremonial type resolution. You know, my dad was a gun owner and he'd never let me touch his guns, but Supervisor Wheeler was the one who taught me how to shoot a gun. And so I appreciate that. So I certainly support this Second Amendment, but I, but I do caution what precedent we're setting and what the implications could be.
Yep. Madam Chair, if, if the verb, excuse me, if the word sanctuary is, is problematic for the board as a whole, for any member, it's mentioned twice in the resolution and there's a version where it can be removed. If that is a concern and the rest is more palatable, that is also an option for this board to remove the title and one word sanctuary that's within the body of the resolution as it stands now.
Do you want to add anything or should we open it?
Yes, I wanted to briefly talk about, you know, representing 60% of, of, you know, the county because that's not what this is. And there are lots of things that come before this board that are partisan that we take up. And to say that we don't deal with partisan issues on this board is absolute nonsense. We deal with partisan issues all the time because they affect our people. And it doesn't mean we need to take a partisan stance, but we take a principled stance on those issues. You know, when it came to Prop 36, it was extremely partisan, but this board took a stance on that. And, you know, it wasn't until the Prop 50 issue came up that, that we started talking about not taking partisan stances on this board. We take partisan stances on pending legislation all the time. Almost every pending legislation that comes before this board is partisan. And so I think it is our responsibility as leaders of this county to highlight the things that are happening to our people, highlight the bad bills that are coming, highlight the good bills that are coming. That is our responsibility as leaders of this county. And I think this resolution is a, just a reminder to the people of this county that the leaders that they elected support them and support their, their rights. And despite what is happening in Sacramento, despite the laws that are coming down on them that make it harder for law-abiding citizens to, to keep and carry firearms, that we support them. That's all this is. This is just letting them know that we support them and it's nothing more or nothing less than that. So I don't buy the partisan issue. I don't buy that at all because partisan things come before this board all the time. And, you know, we are just here for the people. This is just to let them know that we are with them and that we support them. And that's all this is.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open it up to public comment. If you'd like to form a line, please. State your name and county of residence and then after you can sign in after the fact.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Mike Carey. Beautiful bride back there. We've lived in Madera County for 42 years. And thank you so much Supervisor Wamhoff for bringing this resolution forward. And Supervisor Rogers, what you said was, I couldn't have said better myself. The Second Amendment is definitely under attack. In fact, this legislative session alone in Sacramento, they put out 71 new bills trying to erode our, our Second Amendment rights. That happens every session. All of us here are volunteers, we live locally and, including myself. We don't make any money to be a part of this group. The group's name is CRPA, the California Rifle and Pistol Association, which actually was formed 150 years ago this year, just, just before this county was formed as well. And what happens is when there are bills that are put forth, our group is a civil rights group, so we work in Sacramento to combat those bills. And when they do pass, because Governor Newsom just signed four bills into law, now we have to take them to federal court and try and get those bills enjoined so that they don't impact the citizens of our state. So you probably realize California has more gun-related laws than any other state in the nation. But nonetheless, we still suffer from so much crime. In fact, it continues to grow. Why is that? Because the laws that are passed really only impact us law-abiding folks. And the criminals, they don't care. They're going to break the law no matter what laws are passed. So what we don't really need is gun control issues. We need criminal control laws. Like the analogy was made earlier that many folks choose to use an automobile in a dangerous or reckless way when they're drunk, but we don't ban the automobiles. We deal with those, we don't call it auto crime, we call it drunk driving, for example. So I think we need to change the focus of what really needs to happen because the gun control laws don't really do anything positive to solve the problem. So we're here asking, please help support and protect the citizens of Madera County. And as was already said, this is really just a statement to Sacramento that we in Madera County stand behind all rights and that even includes the Second Amendment rights of our citizens. And also, that is all of our right, but that's also a choice. If folks don't want to be involved with firearms, that's completely up to them. And I should point out that the Second Amendment doesn't just support firearms, it's really all arms. So if you carry pocket knives, pepper spray, anything like that, the Second Amendment helps protect your right to do so.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so very much. And by the way, we really appreciate all your dedication and hard work to serve the citizens of our county. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'm actually a resident of Fresno County. I came up here and I support this resolution. The real issue here is that the US Supreme Court, in five court rulings, how a ruling ruled that the Second Amendment is an individual right and applies to common arms. McDonald case via the 14th Amendment, it's incorporated, so yes, it applies. Sotano case, modern arms are covered, 200,000 arms, i.e. electric stun guns, means that these are in common use. Obviously, most handguns are, handguns, semi-automatic rifles are arms in common use and are constitutionally protected. Bruin case, we have a right to carry arms in nonsensitive places. Bruin standard also said, what is the standard? Text, historical analysis for gun control laws. If a gun control law conflicts with the plain text of the Constitution, then you go back to the founding era and see if there's any historical analogies. California has gone completely in reverse. You guys are not challenging state law, you are upholding federal Supreme Court ruling. Now, there's hundreds of cases in the courts and I'm a gun rights geek, so that's how come I know this stuff, okay? I was, my name's Nikki Steller, that was the California spokesperson for the Pink Pistols, an LBGTQ gun rights group, and I was a sometimes national spokesperson. I've touched base with some of my friends. I said, State Senator Shannon Grove said yay about what you guys are doing, just got a text back from her. And I'll be happy to work with you because I would love to see this spread all across California. My quick comment about our state legislature, it just seems to me that on one hand, our government is doing everything to protect violent predators, and on the other hand, they want to strip law-abiding citizens' ability to protect themselves. It's like they have this, what I call, for lack of a better term, controlled chaos to destroy our state, our republic. Keep doing what you're doing. Thank you again.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments. Welcome, council member.
Rohi Zachariah, 1906 Howard Road. What I wanted to say is, if you guys know that address, you'll know that stands the last gun store in Madera. Not in Madera County, there's still a few bomb and pop shops, but the last store in Madera. Why that's important is because if you guys don't stand up for the Second Amendment, you're going to be like Los Banos, who has lost their last gun shop. Your Second Amendment is only there when you can actually buy guns from a gun store. And why I say that is because the state, I know, I appreciate you guys talking about gun owners, don't realize that the state has actually attacked gun businesses more harshly than when I opened in 2011, there was about five or six of us. And as of, I think, last year, when Big Five closed, I'm about corporate stores have given up doing business in the state of California. So, I commend you in taking this up. I appreciate you saying it's putting a flag, but it's more than that. You guys do need to take a stand. Madera needs to be more vocal to the state that says, we are fed up. This last Assembly Bill 1127, officially the Glock ban, which bans fully automatic or potentially fully automatic weapons, is already protected by the federal law. You cannot have fully automatic weapons. So, all it did, its initial writing was to essentially erase all handguns. They knew that was overpowering, so they had to come in and make sure that it was very specific so that it didn't violate the Second Amendment. That law, if it passed in its full intention, is one step away from banning all firearms, because theoretically, all firearms could be converted to fully automatic weapons. That's the power that you guys have today, is to at least take a stand and make that initial step. But I would say it needs to go further. We don't need to be worried about state and federal funding. I don't think feds are going to care, because we're not going by federal law here. This is the crazy tyrannical California that we have that's basically taking away our Second Amendment rights. So, I hope you guys stay in favor of it, but also push forward to do more. Thank you.
Do we have anyone online for this item?
No comments online.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, April.
So, I don't have to say my name?
Yes, please do so.
April Molina, Madera County resident for, well, since 1981, so a long time. I'm also a legal gun owner here in the county, have been since I could legally carry. And I just want to say that the Second Amendment is not just for 60% of Madera County residents, it's for 100% of Madera County residents. Just because the other 40% does not exercise that right, does not mean that you should not stand for the totality of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. So, Supervisor McCully, I would urge you to vote on this and not abstain. Supervisor Wamhoff, thank you for trusting us, because as the post said, this is against, this is a protection of the people against a tyrannical government. And it's, it's your government. So, thank you for trusting us with the Second Amendment, knowing that we will stand together with you on this. That's it. You've got two minutes left.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I will close public comment and bring it back for action.
Just to make one last comment, it would be that any infringement of the state on our verbal confirmation or a resolution would be not only a violation of the Second Amendment, it'd be a violation of the First Amendment. We have a First Amendment right to stand our ground, and especially, who's against the Constitution? I mean, come on. That is our, the basis, we agree as politicians, as elected officials, representatives of government, we hold up our right hand, and we swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I've done that at least 10 times now in my career. And I, you know, I take it seriously. It's not light. So, it's an important responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor, with that, I will entertain a motion.
And I move to approve.
I'll second the motion.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Wamhoff.
Yes.
Supervisor Rogers.
Yes.
Supervisor Poitras.
Yes.
Supervisor, Chair Gonzalez.
Yes.
Vote passes four.
You skipped Supervisor McCully.
McCully has abstained.
I think you still have to call for the vote.
Supervisor McCully.
Vote passes four zero.
Thank you very much. Next item is pending legislation. Do we have any?
I wanted a point of clarification from county council. Because of the abstention, you mentioned that it's counted as an "aye" vote. What would the record reflect as far as the passing or the?
In my, Madam Chair, members of the board, it will likely say four zero slash one abstain, which is a pass vote.
Okay.
And it'll account for how each supervisor recorded their vote, either in favor or against or abstain. The minutes will likely reflect just that.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
And I would like to note that Madera County is now therefore declared a Second Amendment sanctuary county. So, thank you.
Pending legislation.
Nothing at this time.
I would like to note, though, that if this is something that Supervisor Wamhoff would like to pursue to, when we do our update to our legislative platform, to include that.
Sure, that'd be great.
All right. Supervisor and staff reports. I'll start with Supervisor Rogers.
Yes, I just want to thank everyone who, Supervisor Gonzalez attended the funeral of Ray Brontis, and it was very well-attended. The ceremony was a wonderful ceremony, and just exemplified his life and his children. I was amazed at their strength to be able to get up and speak. It was very moving. The, I've never been to a funeral quite like that before in my life, where the officer stood guard over the casket and the flag draped, excuse me, hard to talk about this, the flag draped coffin. It was very poignant and a great honor, great honor to be there. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor McCully.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Last Wednesday, Thursday, we had a workshop with the Air District up in Bass Lake. Great opportunity to talk about different programs for our farmers, forest health, as well as, of course, keeping our air clean. Did not stay at Bass Lake, as I live very close. Just took the opportunity to commute back. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Wamhoff.
Yes, I had a town hall last Wednesday. It was very well-attended, had probably 70-plus people there, where we discussed all things related to public works and law enforcement. We had speakers from Assemblymember's office. And so, it was great to interact with those residents. Would like to note, we used a portion of our district fund for refreshments. I don't have the exact dollar amount, but it was in the $200-$300 range, $200 range. So, wanted to report that out as well. I wanted to attend the funeral last week. I really, really tried, I just couldn't make it work with the conflict that I had. But I have been to many law enforcement funerals over my time, and it's, it's obviously always sad. But, you know, seeing the behind-the-scenes work that you mentioned, coordinating with our folks to stand guard, and, I mean, even at the funeral home, you may not know that, but, you know, many times, we have people standing watch at the funeral home 24/7 until that officer's laid to rest. And so, I wanted to thank everyone involved in that process, because many times, they are unpaid in that, and it's all volunteer work for the most part. And so, wanted to just remind people that, especially our law enforcement folks, you know, most officers and deputies, they die in car accidents. It's not from gun-related deaths or assaults. Most of it is just because of not wearing your seatbelt or excess speed, those types of things. Doesn't mean, you know, we don't drive fast and do those types of things, but, you know, you might be exempt from the law, but you're not exempt from physics in a car crash. And so, not pointing any fingers or any blame, because I actually don't know the cause of the crash for this officer. But it's just a reminder to, you know, just stay aware, stay safe, wear your seatbelt, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisor Poitras.
I did want to thank one more person, I was remiss. Stacy Burns, Sergeant Stacy Burns stood guard over Raymond until he was extracted from the vehicle. And I believe it was like four hours. I'm sorry, it's really tough for me to talk right now. But I really want to thank her publicly for what she did. That's just really special. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Supervisor Poitras.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Last Friday, I attended a SR 99 Coalition meeting in Merced. We talked about different funding sources and progress being made on 99 in Merced, Madera, and Tulare Counties, and different funding sources that will be emerging and different trends. And then tomorrow, I'll be heading off to attend a Calafco meeting. So, very exciting.
Thank you for that.
Lafco, very exciting.
Thank you. I want to echo the sentiments of the supervisors. I did attend the funeral services for the officer, and I just want to extend my condolences to our public safety. That takes a huge toll on all of you, because it could be anyone. So, my sincere condolences to you all. It was a very, very moving ceremony, and I want to thank Supervisor Rogers, he played beautifully on the piano. And so, it was, what a beautiful service. CIO Schuber.
Thank you, Chair. Nothing to report.
Thank you. County Council?
No report, Chair. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Do we have any staff reports? I'm seeing none. Okay, with that, we still have some unfinished business in closed session, so we will recess back into closed session. Thank you. I'm seeing none. Okay, with that, we still have some unfinished business in closed session, so we will recess back into closed session. Thank you.
Oh, we're back. Okay, County Council, do we have any reportable actions out of closed session?
Madam Chair, there are no reportable actions from closed session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we will stand adjourned.